Mayor Davis, as you know. While we are working hard in his absence, Chris get the roll call.
The Chair have the roll call.
Declarations of conflicts of interest, anybody in the room right there and zoom in. See none will move on. We have confidential license today, folks, and Counselor Martin, you have the resolution.
Hello. I'm going camera to deal with.
Point one, Colburn point.
Yes.
Those defending acquisition dispositional by the municipality council. Yes, thank you. Who's your second? Counselor Solomon, any discussion ongoing in camera folks? I don't see, Chris, you can call the.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Motion carries.
Can we have a pretty. Now screen.
We have everybody here today except for Mayor Davis.
Okay, so just we take a brief surgery while the folks are zoomed in, switch over to the securely.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so on the floor of the resolution debate.
Thanks to the book, Chris. All those in favor for the resolution coming out of closed session, I'd find one. One point disposition. Most favorite, please raise your hand.
Record.
You should record. And there's a call these a mover.
Yeah.
We've got a mover and second, it's already. I moved the second and all the items. We had Solomon so well it moved.
Go back.
Go back. We had Martin and. Gino. But we did get, I did ask for mover and second for all items.
This is for the resolution.
So we got you and you move in second. There we go.
Am I reading this? It says I'm.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah. I should pay attention.
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Sullivan that the sale of Colburn Point being lands to be further described on a reference plan to be deposited for the sum of $1 million to 1-0-0-0-1-5-6-6-7-8 Ontario Inc. be approved. And that the chief administrative officer and the city solicitor be directed to finalize outstanding minor matters regarding the agreement of purchase and sale between the corporation of the city of Bramford and 1-0-0-0-1-5-6-6-7-8 Ontario Inc. And that the city clerk be directed to place the agreement of purchase and sale between the corporation of the city of Bramford and 1-0-0-0-1-5-6-6-7-8 Ontario Inc. On the signing by law for execution by the mayor and the city clerk.
Discussion. Counselor.
Yes, the million dollars, where is the million dollars headed for?
Through through Mr. Chair Brian Hutchings, City, City CEO, that money will go into our. We're seeing those monies that go into accounts, help us with further capital funding as all our property disposition does, unless we're directed otherwise by council.
Okay, so then it would be fair if I moved amendment that this million dollars go to the affordable housing account for housing. Seeking a second.
No second there, let's move on. Counselor Carpenter, any further discussion? Counselor Bentover, you seconding that?
I have.
Okay, it's on the floor, amendment on the floor, discussion.
I think that we've done an excellent job in the past with the lauding funds into affordable housing and into that reserve and to moving that initiative forward. In this case, I'm more inclined to stick with status quo and let the funds go into our capital projects. We have a lot of infrastructure changes that need to be made coming down the road. Especially with adding all this housing into the downtown core, we have to move people around, so. It's a tough decision, but I think in this case I'm going to keep the, I'm going to be not supporting this. Because I think we should be keeping that money in the capital budget to support all the other great initiatives that we have coming down. Especially with transit and transportation and infrastructure are concerned. Thank you.
Counselor, thank you. Counselor Hunt, you have the floor, go ahead.
So through, through you to staff, when we, when we say we're the million dollars is just going into our capital budget. The priorities of the capital budget are then determined at estimates time or or are they projects that are on the books that maybe at this point are not funded? Or there's no, there's no budget to fund them and then there's now a million dollars more to, to fund those. I just, I, I think I I think I agree with Counselor Carpenter that we're just putting a million dollars into capital budget. I think I would rather have a clearer picture of where that million dollars is actually going to be spent.
Can through, you like me ask that, Mr. Chair?
As you wish.
Thank you. So just, just a background is, is previously councils given us direction to redirect funds from the sale of Old City Hall. And also property on Market Street that we sold as well, publicly listed, I believe it sold for 3.8 or 4.2 million. Somewhere in there, we also, we also have directions to sell Old City Hall and the tourism building and those, and those monies will go into affordable housing. To the million dollar question, no pun intended, to the million dollar question that you're asking, those monies go into a capital reserve and if you remember, if you remember how our and ballparking Counselor Hunts, we spent about $120 million on capital a year. About 40 millions funded by things like DCs and development charges and other things like grants and another 30 to 40 million are funded by our reserves. This is coming out of those reserves. It goes into a capital reserve. It's not specifically allocated. And that's decisions made at estimates committee when we, when we bring forth the capital budget. And that money's coming out of the dwell brings that out of reserves. If you wonder where those reserves are from, they're from, they're from things like this where we put them in the capital reserves. So it's not specific to one project, but it goes into a pot of money.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, thank you. Counselor Tilburg, sorry, Counselor Martin first, then Counselor Bentover, go ahead.
Thank you. The other thing I have to remember is that we appropriated these lands and that cost us significant amount of money. Counselor Bentover's already asked for an accounting of what the amount that was. So I think it's appropriate that this money going to capital to help replace the money that was spent expropriating these properties in the first place. These properties, when we expropriated, were all up to date on their taxes. So we lost that tax revenue. And it's important to keep that million dollars in the, into the capital reserves. Recover the lost taxes and the money that was spent to appropriate these lands in the first place.
The Counselor Bentover, it's your turn now.
Thank you, Chair. I, I chose to support this because what we see is a trend of many places that have affordable housing, affordable rents. I wouldn't call it, it's not under the technicality of affordable. It's rents under a thousand dollars and sometimes they're two and three bedroom homes even. And those are being bought up. People being rent evicted and then those homes are being relisted at $2,300. And so while we may think at this point in time that we are doing a good job, I can tell you that the future does not provide well. Particularly in an old world like my, like we have, where these homes are being purchased. And this is occurring, so I believe that we have to do more. And that that million dollars will help alleviate a lot of the future planning. With that, I also want to recognize the fact that in the buildings that were facing off of Colburn Street on top of the, the retail lands and on the apartment buildings that were there. Quite frankly, was some of the most affordable housing in the city. And many people had to be evicted. Find a new place to live at a higher cost. And that never has really been offset in the decade long period that is, I think, between those dates and today. And so I think when we, when we look at that, we look at what's happening, what's coming in the future. We may still be having, we, we do need to pad those affordable housing numbers up.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, Les, go ahead, please.
Mr. Chair, is, is there a specific project that would be accelerated in the affordable housing realm if this million dollars went into it? Or is this going to sit in a fund for some time, waiting for enough funds to accumulate to, to actually do something?
Again, through Mr. Chair. The, right now, Counselor Slash, the housing staff had just finished 177 Colburn Street West. That's launched, we're now working on the county up on Trillion Way. And these all have money set aside for them. The truly, and then the next one is Lucy Marco Place is being now. So those all have money set aside from the next one after that is Sheller Lane. It's a project that'll have, I believe, 49 units. It's, it's ballparked approximately 23 to 24 million dollars to build those units. And we have $11 million in the bank right now to do those. We're applying for HAF funds for the federal government. Housing accessibility funding, I believe it's a big grant billion dollars that federal government just announced, we're married. Myself in the middle of writing that grant's application for that. And so it would go towards that application of the, the next one would be Sheller Lane, which would be, you know, 11, I believe it's 11 or 12 million dollars we still have in reserve. Which would go to that $23 million to build Sheller Lane.
Of, of the 23 million, how much of that would be mortgaged, right?
That's, we still haven't figured that out, Counselor Slash, we're probably talking three or four million, Counselor Slash, we're, we're, we're gap about five or six million, but we're trying to fill that gap through the housing accessibility funding, but we don't know, we're just, it has to be replying by July 24th, I believe it is. And we won't know until the, the fall with that, if that gap gets filled or not.
Okay, and, and what year is the, that bill proposed to, to take place?
We would be after Trillion Ways done that, that would be probably 2024, we could start to look to break ground and late 2024 with that developer, it's, 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 it's a novel going all around it. So the roads will be printed by that developer, what have you. And so late 2024, but a year from now.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, thank you. Additional speakers to this, to the amendment? He spoke to the amendment, Counselor Scully, Counselor Carter, he spoke to the amendment as well.
I guess moved amendment, I didn't speak to it.
You, yeah, the Chair, I believe she did. So anybody else that hasn't spoken already?
Point of order.
Yes.
I would challenge the Chair's opinion that I spoke to the resolution, I just moved the amendment, I haven't spoken to it.
There a second? Chris, if you could inform the committee of what the vote means to take a vote.
Through the Chair, so when the Chair gets challenged, the resolution that's on the floor is that the decision of the Chair be sustained. So by voting yes, you're agreeing with Counselor with Chair McCurry, by voting no, you're agreeing with Counselor Carpenter. So all those in favor for the decision, the Chair be sustained, please raise your hand.
Sorry, can I just, Chris, I could barely hear what that meant.
Sorry, Counselor, so the motion on the floor right now is that the decision, the Chair be sustained. By voting yes, you are agreeing with the Chair's decision and ruling. By voting no, you are not agreeing with the ruling.
Thank you.
Recorded vote. So we'll do a recorded vote, so all those in favor, please raise your hand and leave your hand raised until I call your name. Counselor Caputo, Counselor Martin. Counselor McCurry, Counselor Secoli. Counselor Slas. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Counselor Samuel. Counselor Sullivan. Counselor Hunt. Counselor Carpenter. Counselor Grant Tooborg. So it's a tie vote by five procedural bylaw states that if it's a tie vote, the decision of the Chair is sustained.
Vindication. Sweet, sweet.
The block.
Okay, now let us return to where we were prior to that interruption. Further discussion. Let's go to the vote.
All those in favor, please raise your hand on the amendment. Recorded. Counselor Hunt. You can lower your hand now. Counselor Slas. Counselor Carpenter. Counselor Van Tooborg. Counselor Samuel. All those against, please raise your hand. Counselor Caputo, Counselor Martin, Counselor Sullivan. Counselor McCurry, Counselor Secoli, so the amendment fails. Counselors. Keep voting. Yes, so through the Chair, it's lost.
No overtime. Okay, so the amendment is failed. Which brings us to the main motion. Any other amendments? Any other challenges? Counselor, Counselor Bentover.
Well, transit's the thing, I put a motion for the disco into the transit fund.
I'm going to rule that out of order. Let's move on. Any other?
We do this all the time, we've done this in the past, we've made them go to parks and other things, so if that's your ruling, I'll challenge it.
Predicted it'll be five, five. Yes, you have a second. Counselor Carpenter, Chris, if you could explain the rule and take a vote, please.
Through the Chair, be, the motion that's on the ground, the motion that's on the floor is that decision, the Chair be sustained by voting yes. You were agreeing with the decision of the Chair by voting no. You're disagreeing with the decision of the Chair. A tie vote sustains the decision of the Chair. So all those in favor that the Chair, decision, the Chair be sustained, please raise your hand and leave your hand raised. Counselor Caputo, Counselor Martin. Counselor Sullivan, Counselor McCurry. Counselor Secoli. All those against. Counselor Slas, I voted those. All those against, Counselor Hunt, Counselor Carpenter. Counselor Van Tooborg. And Counselor Samuel. The decision of the Chair is sustained on a recorded vote of six to four.
And we'll go to the vote now.
Recorder voice, well. All those in favor of the resolution, please raise your hand and leave your hand raised until I call your name. Counselor Caputo. Counselor Martin, Counselor Samuel. Counselor Sullivan. Counselor McCurry, Counselor Secoli. Counselor Hunt, Counselor Slas. Counselor Van Tooborg. All those opposed? I apologize, Scott, Counselor Carpenter, did you vote in the affirmative?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And Counselor Carpenter voted in affirmative. Through the Chair, the motion carries unanimously in reporter votes.
Just a quick thank you. We go to bylaws, Counselor Carpenter, you have first and second. Could you state your second, please, and go ahead?
Yes, it's moved by myself and seconded by my wardmate, Counselor Hunt. Lee be given mover and second, due to the following bylaw for first and second reading being a bylaw to approve the sale of certain lands and premises within the city of Bramford, 115 Albion Street. This is from a special city council meeting of June 13th, 2023. And 136 is a bylaw to authorize access to government agreements individually dated and listed as Schedule A attached here to an agreement to purchase sale between the corporate city of Bramford and Ford Richmond Street, 115 Albion Street. Bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council, corporate city of Bramford, respect to a special meeting held on July 18th.
Counselor, thank you. Discussion on this. Counselor Carter, go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. We, one, bylaw 13623. No, sorry, but 135, by 115 Richmond Street, who is the individual, it's just a corporation, but what is the? Purchase sale between the corporation of 40 Richmond Street, sorry, 115 Albion Street, who is, who is this company 40 Richmond Street GP Limited? It's just a quick name made up that you make up when you make a corporation name. Who is the individual behind this corporation? Does no one know?
Yeah, I can take that through the Chair, Counselor Carpenter. I met the two gentlemen over Zoom, they're from the GTA of Richmond Hill specifically. I don't remember their first names, but I can look that up for you. They're the property owners of the Old Victoria School. And they're purchasing the park, I guess, to expand on the development there.
And, and further question, if I may, then 115 Albion Street, do we know the actual size of the property of, of 115 Albion Street? We're selling a park here, so what, what is the actual size of the park?
Through the Chair, I'll pull it up, give me two minutes and I'll tell you the exact size of the park, of the park.
My understanding is the park isn't as, you know, as big as it looks, some, some of that parkland is owned by 40 Richmond, as I understand it. But I know that when I drove around the park, if, but, and I counted the lots that were across street from it, I get 13 building lots. Now, I'm sure it's not that big, maybe it's only 10 building lots, but my understanding is a building lot in the city of Bramford goes between 100 and 200,000 dollars. That's a million dollars, so I'm just wondering, are we giving this property away at this price?
I'll answer your first question, first with the acres, if I can, Brian Hutchings, and then it'll give Mr. Petro a chance to answer the question. The, the lot, the park is .69. And the lot for the, the ownership of the school is .20. And somebody probably in the day, Council years ago, would have done a deal where we both shared it and community, community, and you know, together it's .89. But now, if they, they develop that property, the park becomes extremely small, .69 acres. We have property just across the streets of 2.2 acres that will make it a park. The community, we can almost apart this three times the size with more amenities and with, which is a growing neighborhood. So right now it's .69, the park plus the, the ownership of the other group is .2, so .89 total.
So six, so six nine, we know how many building lots that would be? I'm just trying to get a, I just try to get an understanding of why we didn't just go to the marketplace with this .69 then and, and get the highest bidder to pay for the property.
Through the Chair to Counselor Carpenter, so this, this specific deal here, I mean, .69 acres could, depending on the way that this specific lot is broken down. You know, could result in, in anywhere from four to six lots, building lots specifically. I can't speak to why it was decided we went to this specific developer. But I'll, I'll tell you, in, in many cases, there's more value in selling a piece of property to someone who owns the adjacent property than it is to going to market. Especially something of this size, so I would suspect that the decision was made because the person who was making the unsolicited offer owned the property next door and council's decision was to, to negotiate with this developer. We were able to negotiate more than council directed us, we were directed to start at 475. I was able to get him up into the 500, so.
Okay, one final question, if I may, then same, same as the last question, it didn't go quite anywhere. So this money then goes to our, our capital reserve account to the CEO as our current policy?
Yes, yes, through your Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we're not going to see an amendment for it to go anywhere. All right, thank you.
Do you want to try an amendment, Counselor?
No, no, I think I know where counsel stands on affordable.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Petro, further to Counselor Carpenter's question, well, it's fresh in my mind. Could, could we, as a matter of course, get a corporate search on companies we're doing business with or proposing to do business with? It helps us fully understand who they are and it may from time to time keep members of council in trouble. To know exactly who we're dealing with, so they don't wander into a conflict of interest.
Yeah, thank you, Sir Chair, that's a fantastic idea, and then I can, I can incorporate that into our policy moving forward.
Yes, thank you, Rush. More discussion, Counselor Buda, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you to the Chair, so to staff, to CEO. Do we not have a plan in place to actually look at affordable housing going adjacent to the park on Sydney Street? Is it Sydney?
Yes, I, I can, there's two, there's two, there's, there's two properties there. One to the south, which is 2.2 acres or so, I'm talking on the park. There's one to the north, which is 3.3 acres. We have, do have council asset gives direction, look at housing there. It is on Mary's list and it says it would be a small housing development that would be put on that 3.3.
Beside the park at the end of the park and that's.
Obviously.
Leaving the brown field.
Yes, but that would be, we're, we're bringing that back to social services, maybe to the whole plans for the other park, but that's in, in, in the director of housing's current preliminary plan, there is, there's a spot for there for affordable housing there.
I think you raised a point of privilege, because I have a delayed reaction today. But I, Counselor Carpenter made a comment that he believes he knows where counsel stands on affordable housing, and I think that's inappropriate and it alludes to the fact that we don't support affordable housing, when really what I don't support is ad mockery on the fly, regard, like for millions of dollars. So I, I think we owe an apology as, as a whole for assuming what we, how we feel about affordable housing.
Counselor, thank you for your comments. I think your comment on the matter is sufficient, I'm not going to press the Counselor for an apology. Your point is well taken. Further discussion. Okay, let's go to the vote on first and second. Oh, basically, in a recorded vote.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Henry is to call your man, Counselor Caputo. Martin, Samuel, Sullivan, McCurry, Secoli, Hunt, Slas, members opposed. Raise your hand, Counselor Carpenter and Van Tooborg.
Thank you, Chris. Counselor Solomon, you have reading number three, do it, please.
Moved by myself, seconded by my wardmate, Counselor Secoli, that all bylaws having received a first and second reading be taken as read a third time. And they finally passed and signed by the mayor and clerk.
Discussion on third. Any amendments? Let's go to the votes.
I have an amendment.
Great strike, let's go to the vote.
The amendment is to put the funds into affordable housing.
Secondary? There we go. We'll go to the vote on the amount.
Dear Chair, can I just get some clarification on what bylaw the Counselor is demanding, because currently right now it's on the floor, so they're reading all the bylaws. So can Counselor.
The one with Albion. Actually, we'll put it on both then. Put on both and do them individually.
All those in favor?
Can't see.
I'm going to be just as difficult, as I can be and rule this out of order. So let's go. So, George? Counselor Carter, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to try an amendment that, that this, the, the funding from 115 William Street to 500,000, oh, white, sorry, Albion Street. Be, be directed to the parks equipment for the new park that's going to replace this park. I think it's going to be Sidonham Park. Otherwise, we're going to, and if I can get a second, then I'll speak to it.
You have a second.
Okay, I'm speaking to it. What the argument here is that we're selling this park. We're selling the city park here and we're going to have a better park, which is the Sidonham Park, is what I'm hearing from the counselors and from staff. So if we don't direct some funding towards that park for the, for the equipment to be in that park, we will not have a park for some time and the property will be sold. towards that park for the, for the equipment to be in that park, we will not have a park for some time and the property will be sold and the neighborhood will be without a park. So, uh, if, if that's the intent, this, to have a better park, as I've heard the CIO say, at a two point two acre park, then I think we should support this funding, five hundred thousand dollars going towards the cost of that new park.
I'd like to hear from staff on this.
Yeah, if I can speak to that through the, the Chair to Counselor Carpenter. So we negotiated this agreement of purchase and sale so that we're able to lease back the park from the, uh, purchaser for one year, I mean, for one dollar, um, up until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Um, and I was working with Rick Cox and Parks and Rec, um, and he assured me that that's plenty of time to guarantee that we do not leave that neighborhood without a park. That was something that Counselor directed us, so.
So we have, uh, an amendment on the floor. Counselor Secoli. Go ahead, please.
I just feel the need to get this onto the floor. We go through a lengthy and rigorous estimates process so that we can take our time and determine where our funds are best directed and doing this on the fly like this, it seems like somebody's trying to prove a point right now and doing it on the fly is irresponsible. And we can discuss.
Point of order.
Spend this money. We can discuss here, we're going to.
I believe that, that, that there was a, there was motive involved in that, and I would expect a retraction.
We can discuss where we're going to spend this money during the upcoming estimates process. I don't see why there's this push and pull to suddenly decide on the fly without any notice where we're moving millions of dollars. So no, I will not be supporting this, and I will not be supporting any amendments coming forward on any topic about where we're going to be moving funds. Thank you.
Counselor, thank you. Counselor Hunt, you have the floor. Counselor Hunt appears to have disappeared.
He should also action.
So we have an amendment on the floor. And I'm gonna go three for three and just rule this out of order, we're going to the vote. And a required vote, Chris.
So third, by no reading of all bylaws, all those in favor, please raise your hand, hand raised. What color name? Counselor Caputo, Counselor Martin, Counselor Secoli, Counselor Samuel, Counselor Sullivan, Counselor McCreary, Counselor Sless, Counselor Van Tooborg.
Excuse me, I wanted, I wanted the bylaw separated.
Too late, we take the vote.
All those opposed, please raise your hand.
Counselor, if you wish to indicate your objection to part of that, you may do so verbally, okay?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just, I don't know what you mean by, uh, voicing my objection, I wanted to separate them both in favor of one and, uh, against the other, but, uh, it's okay, it's moot point, we'll just go ahead with the vote, I'm in favor.
Thank you.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and leave your hand raised. Uh, through the Chair, Counselor Carpenter, did you vote for third and final getting involved bylaws or against?
Oh, I was waiting for, uh, separation, but I guess the Chair's making rules as it goes, so I'll, I'll vote in, against.
Counselor, that's the job of the Chair is to adjudicate the meeting, you've been around long enough to know that. So your vote, sorry again, Counselor Carpenter was what? And then I can, okay, thank you.
Chair, Chair.
Well, it's been a raucous afternoon, folks, and I can't thank you enough for, for making my afternoon very enjoyable and, uh, living the dream as they say. So, um, we've got a third reading done. And we are done, thank you very much, and see you again real soon.